She can hear.
Um, can we do our best to be out by noon today?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
I'm hoping it'll go quick.
We have a meeting with security for the election. With the sheriff.
I don't have much to say. You know me. Ring in.
Tim. He said, who's ringing? I said, Tim.
Ah, I heard someone ring.
There's definitely someone.
We'll go ahead and call the special meeting to order for February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. We're gonna have an approval of the agenda. Commissioners, if there's, if you don't see any changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that. Ma'am clerk.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Mr. Ware.
Yes. Yes. Moving on to item, just item number three, discussion action revision of professional service contract between Colfax County and Mason Isaacson's P A. County manager.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We are basically going to renew the legal services agreement with Isaacson and his firm on the two lawsuits that we have with Mary Lou Kern and Roadrunner Health Services.
And then from my understanding too, this contract also is a conflict of interest. So if at any time that the county attorney has a conflict, uh, we will choose to use Lynn Isaacson. So.
Mr. Chairman, that is absolutely correct. That's why we've had to use Lynn Isaacson as a conflict counsel.
Commissioners, any discussion? Commissioner. Commissioner Ware.
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, I just have one question. It may just be a typo or something. Uh, but on the notice of public hearing, at the bottom, it says done this twentieth day of February. Is that's just the date that the
Notice.
The notice was issued?
Yes, sir.
From my understanding. Just wanna make sure.
Seen no further discussion. I'll make the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second amendment clerk.
Mr. Kern. Commissioner Ware.
Yes. Yes. Moving on to item number four, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Ware.
Yes. Yes.
That had just been on the agenda, the regular agenda.
Oh, his computer's there. He may not be there. June, are you there? You're on mute if you are.
We have a wind warning, look.
There you could ask it when we come back into session with the regular meeting. It's probably more appropriate.
We'll go ahead and call the public meeting, our public hearing to order discussing the Colfax County ordinance 2024-02 and ordinance to amendment to the ordinance 2021-03 adopting the legislative intent and purposes relating to and regulation of cannabis. Is there any public comment? Sure, come on up. If you could just speak clearly into the mic.
Commission, manager, clerk, thank you very much for having me.
Will you please announce your name?
Yeah, my name is Matt Billingsley for the record.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of Colfax County. So I wanted to just speak plainly with you guys. If if someone on this body could provide some clarification specifically around the indemnification form. I just want to, you know, like, I don't have a lawyer here. I just want to like, can somebody tell me like, what what's the purpose of it? Is, you know, what's the intent of it? Is it just to give you guys an extra layer of protection? If the feds come and shut me down, I don't get to turn around and sue you guys. I just, I just want to, you know, some sort of clarifications.
June?
Yes, sir.
Can you answer Mr. Billingsley's question?
Good morning, Chairman Truill and Commissioners. I think in the public comment session, we, you know, we normally would not comment or respond to the public comment on that part, sir. But I believe that what I can say is that we adopted and then amended this ordinance in conform to protect the county and also in conformity with other counties and then cities for their adopting their own, you know, cannabis ordinance, sir. It is consistent with them. And then we provided, we reviewed the other counties and then municipalities. And then we believe that this is the best, the course to protect the county.
Thank you. And June, any prior prior stuff given out by the county is being grandfathered in, correct?
Yes, sir, because it was not properly notified before. So I think the previous owners who were who were permitted by the county are their, you know, grandfather in, sir.
Thank you, Jim.
One follow up, if I may. Does that grandfather, is that like in perpetuity? Or does that mean I'm grandfathered in until October when I have to renew my license?
Jim?
Should be perpetuity.
Okay, I'm just, I just want, you know, clarification.
Yeah, I don't think that this is a license or permit given to the property, you know, the owner. And then, you know, this is substance matter. We cannot change it retractively, sir.
Okay, I understand. And so I guess another thing that now that I'm just kind of speaking in generalization for those that might want to follow up after me, something about the indemnification that I would just really like to, I know that you can't comment on it right now, but the clarification would be nice because there's, it seems like in the process of trying to protect the county that you're removing one of the citizens recourse against the government, right? Like, we don't have a lot of political options against government. And one of the things that we do have is that we have the right to redress our public officials. And if something happens that I can, you know, that we can pursue litigation about that. And so tying the indemnification form and removing that or putting the onus on the, well, okay, unless it's willful acts of neg or willful wrong acts or gross negligence, that's a high bar to set. And I'm not an attorney, but I know that from a like a layperson, that's a big hurdle for me to try to overcome. If so, if the county was, and I'm not saying that any of you guys is going to do this, but if the county was to come in here, do something that impacted a business of mine, that all of a sudden now I have this huge hurdle that's going to cost me tens and tens of thousands of dollars to prove that what the county actually did was gross negligence. And so I feel like removing that, it's like one of the very few things that we actually have as citizens to try to, you know, keep the a governing body in check, so to speak.
Well, thank you, Mr. Billingsley.
Fair enough. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if this would be, I do have a couple of issues. Oh, it must be a batter's day. Anyhow, I do have a couple of issues with the language of this. I I will tell you that originally I was against the indemnification because we don't have indemnification for any of our other licenses in the county. And I didn't think it was fair, but after further consideration, I'm actually in favor of the indemnification because of the implications related to the federal law and the fact that the feds could potentially come after the state and the county. Because allowing growth of marijuana is is not legal federally. And so because of that, I do, I that there is the need for special consideration for cannabis as opposed to our other types of licenses that we have. But there is some language in here that I'm not in favor of. And if you turn to section 10, the very last paragraph E, the last sentence of paragraph E says, if a permittee refuses to execute the indemnification agreement, it will result in non issuance of a permit or revocation of the permit issued and the permittee, the permittee shall not have any rights to appeal this decision to Colfax County Commission. So since this is new, I'm I'm just not in favor of limiting somebody's rights to appeal. I think the commission, if somebody does appeal, I think the commission should, in consultation with legal counsel, make a decision on how it would affect the county. My concern is there may be circumstances that we haven't considered come up. And I I'm not in favor, we were elected by our constituents for a reason. And I think that 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 language should be removed or actually reversed that says shall have the rights to appeal to Colfax County Commission. Again, primarily because this is new and it's unknown. And we are here to represent our constituents. And by limiting our by limiting our ability to do so, I think is is not fair to the people who elected us. My other concern with this is the comment that it's an emergency. I don't see how this could be in any way deemed to be an emergency. And I think the effective date and emergency clause should be removed from the ordinance. I think this needs to go through the same, by the way, that's section 15. This should go through the same ordinance process that every other ordinance goes through at the county level. And all actions and recourse should be available to our constituents. And I think section, the emergency clause and effective date, I think restricts that from our ordinance, our constituents from being able to contribute and provide input to this ordinance. So with that, my recommendation is that both section 15 and section 10, paragraph E, at least the last sentence in paragraph E, be stricken from this ordinance.
Thank you for your comments. That's something we could talk about on the agenda when it comes up for, yeah. Honored to make it now. Thank you. Further public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing. Sorry. No, that's fine.
Joe, Joe, this is just for the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, for cannabis. Where's your other one, Brett? Eleven, he said?
N E.
N E, okay, thank you. Go ahead and call the regular Colfax County Commission meeting to order for February 27th, 2024. Would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance? Commissioner Kern, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the ze symbol of perfect friendship among the United Nations.
Commissioners, next we'll move on to item number four. Is there an approval of the agenda? There is just one item that I'd like to, just to amend. It's on item number 16. That line item only needs to address discussion, action, amending the MVDC policy and transport post order. It's not changing anything else. It was just a double entry from item 17. Is there any other changes that the commissioners would see fit? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment.
So we're second.
It's been moved in second, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Mr. Ware.
Yes.
I'm material.
Yes. Moving on to item number five is the approval of special meeting minutes, public hearing meeting minutes, regular meeting minutes for February 13th, 2024, and the special meeting minutes for February 15th, 2024. Commissioners, is there any changes that you see that need to be made? No, there was one small number correction that I've I've talked with the clerk and it was just a small typo that's been corrected for the regular meeting minutes. We'll see no further changes. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So we're
second, it's been moved in second, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Ware.
Yes.
I want you to hear.
Yes. Moving on to item number six, is there a recognition of visitors? I want to thank everyone for coming. And if I did not already say this, if you would, just please silence any electronic devices that you may have. But can we go ahead and, we'll go ahead and I'll name off who we have on the phone. We have Scott Matthews with the Angel Fire Airport, County Attorney June Rowe. Tim, would you go ahead and introduce yourself and let's go back and forth and pen at the deputy. Uh, Tim, would you go ahead and introduce yourself and let's go back and forth and pen at the deputy? Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to public comment. Uh, public comment will be limited to three minutes. And this is for anything outside of the current agenda. If you have any public comment, please come up to the microphone and speak clearly into the mic. Mr. Martinez.
Morning Commissioners, Madam Clerk, County Manager Gore. I'm just here to tell you guys that, uh, Tina Colangelo put a policy on your, on your desk for you guys to review. That way, when we do present it to be adopted, you guys are aware of what's in there. And there may be a couple instances where we may need some guidance, on what to fill in for the blank. For instance, on page five, on the second paragraph under where it says procedure, it'll have a blank where it says insert name or title, on, on who, that's a contact information on, on certain instances, who should be the person in contact.
Thank you.
That way we could get that back to us and filled out for when we present it to, to be adopted. That's all I have for you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Martinez.
Joe.
Joe.
Joe, I'm sorry.
Yeah. What's up? Commissioner Ware.
Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Martinez, do you want us to fill in all of them? Because there's a lot of those throughout this. Anything that, that you feel that doesn't need to be, uh, the title of the safety committee, as the contact person for that? Okay, because for some of them, it'll be, uh, for like visitations, who's the person in contact? Um, if somebody gets injured, who's the person in contact for that? Okay, and that may be something that might need to go through the county manager or through the commission.
Sure.
But if we all,
We'll work with.
Have some input on to who should be the person of contact. I think we could get that filled out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I'd just like to thank you, Joe, for, for getting this to us and giving us plenty of time to review it because it's extensive.
It is.
And, uh, I really appreciate having the hard copy to scribble on and not, notate.
Of course, and then if you guys would like a digital copy, that way you guys could type into there. I can email you that digital copy as well. I'll get that to you.
I prefer that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further public comment?
Scott.
Hello.
Hello, Scott.
Morning.
Morning Commissioners, morning. Um, I guess to give you a quick update on the airport, is that what you're looking for?
Yes, Scott, just a quick update on the airport.
Okay, um, I'm not feeling well. I've got bronchitis, so bear with me. Okay, the parking lot is complete. Uh, we had help with the Angel Fire. We're missing our roller equipment and, uh, Angel Fire, uh, was gladly able to step up and roll out the parking lot. Uh, the prairie dogs, the numbers are decreasing. When I first got here about three years ago, um, they're, they were, they were a pest, but now, um, there's been a noticeable decline in the population and there's been less damage over the years as well. I'm not, um, repairing asphalt as much as I used to. Okay, the gutters is the second part of the parking lot. Uh, I've already got a construction company lined up, but, as y'all well aware, uh, construction here is seasonal at best. And we're going to have to wait till, uh, things kind of thaw out before we can finish up that second phase and putting gutters around the, uh, carport to eliminate the, uh, ice and snow buildup. Okay, we had a, uh, hangar meeting with Mike Provine and his associates about a month ago. Uh, we have one point two million, uh, tracks for some hangar construction. And I've already have a waiting list of pilots, and so those things are already sold. I have to beat them off with a stick, honestly. And anything left over from that one point two million, uh, Mike was going to take a look at the, getting the main hangar doors, uh, replaced. Those are, uh, they're kind of a struggle to open, especially during the winter with, you know, the, the heat and the cold expansion. Uh, those tracks, they swell and they compact and those sliding doors, it's like a sliding glass door. When you, um, slide them open and open, they come to get stuck and starting to be a problem. But that's also in the mix. Okay, the, uh, regards that fifty ten, five zero one zero inspection, uh, the main, uh, point was the, uh, north runway overgrowth that has been now taken care of. That's been all chopped down and that's not going to be a, uh, an issue anymore. Oh, and we got a, 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 a new, uh, assistant manager. Unfortunately, he got into a, a car accident. So he's going to be out for another month or so. He's starting physical therapy. He broke his leg. But, uh, no, that's, that's good news and thanks for, uh, hiring him on. I could definitely use the help. Uh, and that's about it. That's all I got. Uh, the ski season is starting to wind down, so there may be a slight drop in revenue for March. But, um, the, uh, spring and summer sessions right around the corner, you know, hiking outdoors when, uh, the mountain biking is real popular, so we'll pick up in revenue here about another month from now. Uh, that's about all I got.
Thank you, Scott, very much. Commissioners, Commissioner Kern.
No questions. Thank you, Scott.
Get well.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks for your presentation and get well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
I'm going to mute.
Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward. Moving on to item number eight, discussion approval indigent care.
Good morning Commissioners. Twenty twenty four dash four through twenty twenty four dash fifteen. All of these are out of VMDC, in the total amount of one hundred and ten thousand dollars, four hundred and sixty nine and seventy five cents. All of these meet the guidelines for VMDC indigent, and they are to be paid at a hundred percent. So today I will be asking for your approval.
Commissioner Kern.
Yeah, my only question is I thought there was a seventy five hundred dollar limit. And in particular, the, the flight for life at ninety two thousand and change.
Uh, that was an emerg- uh, medical emergency. So I, I guess I would have to look into that a little more and see. But I'm pretty sure all VMDC claims, no matter the limit, is paid at a hundred percent.
I, I would appreciate it if you would look into it, just, just to make sure because that's a substantial amount.
Okay.
For sure, Ware.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Kern. I mean, this is a lot of money. I think we should, uh, before we approve this, I think we should, uh, be certain on that. And, you know, these claims have historically been relatively small. Um, this is the biggest one that I recall seeing since I've been a commissioner. And for things like the guardian flight, I mean, can we have insurance for indigent claims? I mean, that, this is a, this is a large dollar amount. Is there a possibility of obtaining insurance that would cover us in a situation like this?
Not sure, to be honest.
Um, Warden Slade, would you like to step up?
Like some sort of supplemental insurance to cover us in this incident is what you're, you're asking. I'm not too sure. I guess that would be something to get with the attorney about, right?
Uh, Warden, as far as, uh, I understand, this was a medical emergency. Um, they would have, uh, died had we not taken, um, emergency medical procedures and steps to get this individual to, uh, hospital in Pueblo, Colorado. As far as, uh, insurance, I'm not aware of any insurance that, uh, we would have that would help cover this. Are you, are you aware of any insurance?
Not that I know of. I mean, we can look into it, but other than that, I don't know if there's actual, um, supplemental insurance that would cover something like that.
And once again, I just want to thank you and your staff for taking emergency procedures and getting this inmate the care, um, and the lifesaving efforts that were made to save his life.
Thank you.
Well, for me, for, for the Commissioners, I didn't, I wasn't too sure about the seventy five hundred dollar, so I, I would like to, to hear more on that. I'm fine with approving the, the rest of them, since we're, since we won't hold it up. So we'll just exclude the twenty four dash oh nine. I don't know if you guys are okay with that?
I, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I think.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ware.
Um, I thought that, uh, Commissioner Kern's comment was that the maximum per incident was seventy five hundred dollars.
Yes.
It's, well, the MCMC limit is fifteen thousand. And the other limit is seventy five hundred. Um, yeah, so I, I would just like clarification on the one, is all.
I, I'm pretty sure those are for, um, just new applicants. Those are the, the amounts for new applicants. But I will double check on that just to make sure.
I, I appreciate that. And we're not questioning the need for it or, you know, um, that absolutely, you know, it was necessary. I'm just questioning the limits on the indigent fund.
Okay.
That's all.
So today I will ask approval on every, every case except for twenty twenty four dash oh nine.
Fine with that. I should move to approve those presented with the exception, um, of twenty twenty dash oh nine for, uh, for clarification.
I'll go ahead and second that. It's been moved in second, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Ware.
Yes.
Chairman Trigg.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Moving on to item number nine is discussion action memorandum of agreement by and between the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District, NCNMEDD, and Colfax County for restoring our communities, ROC. County Manager Gore.
I'm Taran. Would you like to come up and present?
I could speak to it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
So, that's no problem. Thank you very much, Tim. So this is agreement between Colfax County and North Central, uh, Economic Development District. The Restoring Communities Grant was, they came to us when they first applied for this grant and asked Colfax County for a hundred thousand dollars, uh, if they were awarded this grant. And what they're going to plan to do is come into, starting here in Raton, but it's all going to be Colfax County. They're going to be going into purchasing single-family homes, remodeling them, bringing them up to standard, and then turning around and selling them back on the market for, as workforce housing, uh, through MFA, and there's certain qualifications that need to be done. Uh, this agreement is just going to say how we are going to do business together and how, how North Central will be communicating through the county. Uh, it's stated in this contract that the hundred thousand will come out of LATCF funding, which is part of the local assistance and Tribal Government Act, which is for economic development. This is, so Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Kern?
No question.
Commissioner Ware?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the only clarification I'd be is, um, I believe the homes that they'll be purchasing are unoccupied homes.
Correct. That's my understanding.
Right.
Is there any further public comment, questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move. Second.
It's been moved in second, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Ware.
Yes. Yes. Thank you Commissioners. I'm excited for this program. Moving on to item number ten, discussion action of, of Angel Fire Airport KXX, K A X X owned and operated by Colfax County, hangar, hangar ground lease agreement. County Manager Gore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a, uh, lease agreement that we've, uh, been working on for some time. We've been adding to it, had several meetings, uh, uh, made changes. Um, we actually took a group out to the Raton Municipal Airport, and, uh, Chairman Frigill accompanied us on that. And we looked at, uh, how Raton did their, uh, lease agreement. We, uh, looked at different, uh, building structures. And with that, we think that we want to do the same thing for our airport, Open Angel Fire. I did talk to Scott, um, Matthews, our airport manager yesterday. And he said that he has, uh, got a lot of interest of, uh, pilots wanting to come in and actually lease, uh, hangars and build hangars and grow that airport. So once again, I think that airport has a lot of momentum. I think, uh, working on this, a hangar ground lease agreement is exactly the right thing to do at the right time.
Thank you. Commissioner Kern?
Um, just a question, will, will each lease have to be independently approved by DFA? Or will they approve the form letter or the form lease and then we won't have to go before them for everyone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that question, and that's a good question. I believe once we get approval, we'll just, uh, it'll be for, it'll be for all of them. June, do you have any, uh, additional information on that?
Uh, Chairman Trigg, uh, Commissioners, uh, I believe that, you know, right now, there's two components of this matter. Whether or not the fair market value of that, the lease premises is over twenty five thousand or less twenty, less than twenty five thousand. And then, uh, based upon that matter, it can be either, we can provide a packet to the DFA for their approval, or it can something that it has to be done, uh, uh, kind of individual basis. But once it's got improved, uh, it's got approved by the commission, out, you know, though, we can reach out to the DFA, uh, whether or not this something can be done in, uh, uh, in a form approval at this time. But I think that's something that we need to have some more, uh, due diligence about, you know, getting some appraisal value of the, uh, lease premises first. And then, uh, we can go from there, sir.
Thank you for that clarification, June.
Commissioner Ware?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I just want to say that this is a significant move forward. Um, I had several airplane owners approach me when I was running three years ago, um, expressing the concern with the lease agreement that the county previously had. And the primary concern was that it was limited to twenty years and nobody wanted to invest a half a million dollars into a hangar that they would have to walk away from in twenty years. And the fact that this lease, um, is for fifty years, I think will overcome, uh, that, that objection from, uh, my constituents that I've had conversations with. So I, I think that is, uh, in itself is, is going to be huge for us to finally get people to, uh, be able to lease property and build a hangar on that. I, I think this will be a huge step forward. Um, and, uh, was, oh, the only other, um, thing I guess in concern with, uh, Commissioner Kern's comment about DFA is the, um, pricing that's stated in here. I'm just not sure if we should actually give dollar amounts here or if the dollar amounts, um, should be somehow, uh, updatable through resolution. Um, I don't know if that would help us in our desire not to have to go through DFA every time we sign up. I don't know if that would help us in our desire not to have to go through D F A every time we sign up one of these. Because the dollar amounts will change, the value will change over time.
And I think it's fine for it to be be put into maybe our fee schedule yearly as it's adjusted. And then it would be amended to the attachment on this on this, and it would go through D F A if needed.
I would agree with that, Mr. Chairman.
I think for for this here, I think this is a, this just makes good business sense. Uh for a long time, the Angel Fire Airport has not been profitable. This is just one step uh in the process to help us get to a more efficient and profitable airport. This will bring in more fixed-wing aircraft, uh which will be housed there, which will help our numbers with the F A A. Uh will help with fuel sales. It'll it'll just help all the way around. Uh there's lots of benefits too to this that I see for the county, the airport, the Moreno Valley, the city of Angel Fire. Um so with that, and I do want to thank the prior advisory committee, because I know they did work on this for for a good part of it to and bring it back to us. Um we picked it up off from them and continued it on. And I have I have nothing further. Is there any other further comment or questions?
Uh one other thing, Mr. Chairman, uh Madam Clerk, my name is misspelled on the document.
Um I didn't do it, but okay, we'll fix it. Or they'll fix it, I guess.
Yes.
I was just letting you know, so.
That's all. Thank you.
An E again? W E I R?
I D. I before E, except after C.
Yeah. Not it on this one. Just leave it. It's those are, it's spelled right there.
Commissioners, anything more? I'll entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Spin move to second amendment clerk.
Mister Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Ware?
Yes.
Chairman Trujo.
Yes. Thank you very much. Moving on to let's see here, item number eleven, discussion action, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve, amendment to the resolution twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash fifty-one, a resolution to adopt policy and procedures for the abandonment and vacation or closure of road and county maintained rightaways. County Manager Gore.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So we've had some issues in the past, um and this is uh this resolution will help provide clarity. Uh this resolution to adopt uh policy and procedures for the abandonment and vacation closure of roads and county maintenance maintain right away. I think this is something that we've needed for a long time. And I think it will help provide needed clarification and instruction in how to proceed with those vacations.
Thank you, County Manager. Commissioner Kern?
No questions.
Commissioner Ware?
Um my only question, Mr. Chairman, is um generally, these abandonments come at the request of constituents. And but there may be some roads that I think that the county itself might need to consider uh processing for vacation or abandonment, whatever the appropriate term is. And I'm just wondering if uh this takes into consideration that, or is this specifically for constituents that are requesting abandonment?
County Manager?
I believe this is specifically or or would more address citizens wanting to vacate roads and wanting the county to vacate roads uh for them. June, do you have any additional on Commissioner Ware's question?
Uh uh morning, Commissioner Trujo and Commissioner, uh I think that was a good question, sir. But I think based upon my research with uh reaching out to other counties, and then they normally follow that uh the statute stated in the abandonment. So we just follow the statute over there, sir. I think we have a, you know, specific statute to follow for the, you know, abandonment. So meaning that the that statute provides that the roadmap, how to uh, you know, to abandon, uh you know, the uh the certain, you know, the road, and then the county ma- uh maintained right away, uh either by the uh, you know, constituents or the county itself. I I've seen that the San On County, uh they did their own their volition uh to uh abandon some of the, you know, road uh by following the statute, sir. So I think that we had, we can follow the statute, and then the we uh follow the statute by adopting this resolution, sir.
Thank you, County Attorney.
No question. I just have one comment.
Yes.
I do think that it it is imperative that when these are being reviewed that um the commission take into consideration whether or not they are cutting off access to public land and therefore land-locking public lands, um because that will drastically reduce uh obviously our constituents' ability for for hunting and recreation uses of of public land. So I don't see it anywhere in here where it's addressed. Um not sure how that could be incorporated into the the uh resolution, but I I do think it should.
I could address to that, Commissioner Kern. That's that's one thing we we had a constituent, or I've had a constituent reach out to me on that. And uh my my thought was insert another item number thirteen, if the commission is in agreeance, where it would say if this is the only access point to public or the public access to state or federal lands, your application would not be approved. The county has a commitment to uphold and serve the interest, the best interest of Colfax County.
In agreement with that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd agree with that. Um it'd be, not only that, also to protect the county, uh that I think it needs to be in here because uh state statute prevents uh you from blocking access to public lands. And if it would be considered that, it may open the county up to some liability.
So uphold, protect, and serve.
I I would suggest that that language be added and then bring this back at the next meeting.
Okay, that's, I have no problem with that.
I agree.
Okay. So we'll take a motion to uh postpone this to our next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Spin move to second amendment clerk.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Ware?
Yes. Yes. Thank you all very much. Moving on to sorry, item number twelve, discussion action resolution of twenty twenty-four dash oh six, fee schedule for Colfax County. County Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we've been uh working on this uh to come up with a fair and equitable fee schedule and keep up with uh increased cost that the county is entering. And I think we've done that. And we uh actually worked with resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve for the abatement of roads. And are presenting it today as somewhat of a complete package to address all the issues. But I think the fee schedule uh as presented looks pretty good to me. I think Commissioner Ware may have had one question concerning um uh airport that hopefully we can get resolved today.
Thank you, County Manager. Commissioner Ware, would you like to address your question?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chairman. I guess what I was looking for is justification for the um airfield and hangar fees for the Angel Fire Airport uh each being a hundred dollars higher than for the uh, well, I guess in Raton, uh the Raton Airport. And and do we have the right to, I mean, we don't own the Raton Airport, right? The city of Raton.
What this is.
Sorry, go ahead.
This is just the old La Mesa Airfield. We don't actually have.
Oh, the.
Yeah, it's a three three-sided lean-to. It's not a hangar per se.
Yeah.
That's that's different.
I see.
For the money.
You better have a bad emergency landing that to fly in there.
Well, having been out there, I would say that uh the difference in price is justifiable. I I was thinking the
Raton.
I thought maybe we had years ago put hangars out at the Raton City Airport or something.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Yep. Commissioner Kern?
Um, no, I don't have any questions about this presented, but we just did talk about incorporating what is in the hangar lease as part of this, so um fee schedule. So um it will have to be brought back again, or we just postpone it and then add it again.
Okay, thank you. Uh go ahead, Commissioner Ware.
So uh Mr. Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Kern, but at this point, I don't know what kind of revenue we might be missing out on by not approving this. My recommendation would be to approve this now and bring it back at the next meeting with the additions to it. We can update this kind of at will. There's no requirement for us to do it once and and be done.
I would agree with that.
If that makes sense. I don't know if there is any revenue issues that are pressing.
Commissioner Ware, I think your comment is very good. And I do think we're missing on revenues, and I think your suggestion is absolutely thank you.
Uh one thing that I would like to see added in here, and we could just do it with an amendment, is road voc- road vacations uh on here, it was six hundred dollars per applicant. I feel like that needs to be added in here. Uh Madam Clerk, did you want to address your concern?
So I do have a question, uh Chairman Commissioners, on the claim of exemption and the uh vacation of plats. You guys, you have like a three to seven hundred dollars and a four to seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um you guys gave justification on the amount of time that it was going to take uh to work up these documents. Is it going, what is it going to look like we're treating people differently by having different amounts? Should we just not have a set amount of meet in the middle, maybe six hundred dollars or something? That's just my thoughts.
County Manager, go ahead. Yes.
Uh Madam Clerk, I think that's a good question.
Thank you.
Right now, with the amount of uh claim exemptions and vacation of plats and conveyances, I actually worked with the county attorney, and the county attorney reviews virtually all of those. And we thought a sliding scale would be a little more fair fairer to constituents in Colfax County. Some of these are very simple, um but they're still costly, and that's why we left it at three hundred. Some of these are much more complex, and that's why we have a sliding rule up to seven hundred. So the intent and the idea was to be more fair to Colfax County citizens.
So this is only for the the sliding scales more so just to cover the cost of the attorney?
You are exactly right, Mr. Chairman.
I have one question.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
So I have one more question. So when they turn in these applications, do they not turn in all their fees at that time?
They they normally do, but we can look at the application and see if it's going to be a a simple one or a more complex one, and work to give them the appropriate fee.
Yeah. And Commissioners, I don't know if you'd be okay with putting in brackets maybe where those sliding scales are at, but depending on attorney's time or attorney's fee? I don't know, just to be more transparent in that.
We could maybe uh put something in parameters about depending on actual cost. Um
Commissioners, Commissioner Kern?
Don't be good with that.
Commissioner Ware?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I see the need for the sliding scale, and I have no issue with it. It would be nice if we could figure out somewhat, define it better, so it'd be clear to the public. I guess I don't I'm a little concerned about people being surprised at a fee. Um, of course, I I don't deal with a or haven't deal dealt with a lot of these, um other than uh maybe a couple of vacation of plats, but um I'm not sure how that assessment's gonna go and what the criteria is that's gonna determine the sliding scale. And because of that, I'm not sure what the, you know, I don't want somebody coming in paying three hundred and and getting a bill for seven hundred um later or something to that effect. I mean, there need, I would like to see a little more definition, I guess.
Yeah. So how about, I mean, I I would like to add the road loca- road location into this. And then I'm fine with with approving this, and then they could bring it back to us again later with a better definition for the sliding scales and uh the airport hangar leases.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, what if we did something, and I don't know that this is the right number, but what if we did like, for the fee would be one point two times attorney fees or something to that effect? Because the attorney fee seemed to be the determining thing. Um, and then we would be able to tell people what the attorney fees are. We could give them an estimate. But that would preclude us from collecting the fees upfront, because unless you had a minimum charge upfront and you let people know it's it's a minimum charge, and then it's plus attorney fees or something of that nature. I don't know. I'm just trying to think it out.
Hello, Commissioner.
Kern needs a comment. I don't have any additional comments at this time. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh with your permission, what I could do is work with the county attorney to try to quantify uh the cost and get those a little bit more where where they're defined as Commissioner Ware was asking, and uh re-present this at the next meeting.
Well, I'm fine with with approving this and then moving forward and then bringing it to us again at the next meeting, if you Commissioners are okay with that.
Fine with that.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve as is, and then it'll be brought to us at our next meeting again with the other amendments.
So moved.
Second. Spin move to second amendment.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Ware?
Yes. Yes. Moving forward on to item number thirteen, discussion action amendment to Colfax County Financial Policy and Procedures. County Manager Gore?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So some of the challenges uh that Colfax County is facing right now is we are required by D F A to have a fiscal agent to help us monitor uh grants specifically. And this uh is because of our last two audits. And with that said, the manager's office, along with uh legal counsel, has been working with D F A to have them take that requirement away. And as we have uh went through this process and had Zoom meetings with D F A and had several discussions, one of the things that they required us to do is to have a financial policy. We actually worked with D F A and checked with them to see if the financial policy that we presented was acceptable, and uh they agreed that it looked good. I know Commissioner Ware, who has a extensive financial background, looked at it and thought it was a a good policy. At the last meeting, I was directed by the commission to work with uh specifically the county clerk and county treasurer and see if uh we could if we had any changes or amendments that we needed to make. And that's exactly what I did. So we had a very constructive meeting. Um we got input from the county clerk, from the county treasurer's office, and from the financial specialist. And the policy that you have before you today is the financial policy that has been amended to reflect those uh that input from the clerk, the treasurer, the financial specialist. I think it looks good. Hopefully, the mission would approve those.
I don't, I have not seen this, the with the with the changes yet. Uh, Commissioner Kern, abuse.
I have not seen the. I have not seen the changes either. Um and I also think that there's uh and having said that, not knowing whether or not it was addressed, there's an issue with the sheriff's office on that because they operate on a five-day business week, whereas the county operates on a four, so um I think there were some questions on him holding deposits or whatever, or how to handle that. So I'm not prepared to to vote on it because I haven't seen the changes.
Commissioner Ware.
Um yeah, I guess I received this in the email yesterday. I didn't know if, I didn't realize it was, the other Commissioners hadn't seen it. Um I have reviewed it. Uh there's a few minor changes, uh inconsistency in some titles like financial specialist, financial director. Um in a few places, I didn't consider the five-day work week versus four days, so that's something I need to uh kind of relook at it and think about. But I will tell you, overall, I'm, I was very impressed with this policy. It's fairly detailed. Um it's, uh I'll tell you this, it's much better than the policy we have at the Village of Angel Fire. Uh and um I'm seriously considering stealing it for the village. Uh but yeah, I, other than uh some discrepancies in titles, um I I didn't find any issues with it. I thought it was, it was done quite well.
Thank you. And I I did receive it, but it wasn't until late yesterday afternoon I haven't had an opportunity to review it, so. Commissioners, would you like to postpone or take any action on this?
I I mean, we already approved the other one, so it's, we have that in place to satisfy DFA. I would like to postpone this to have an opportunity to review it and also to address the issues with the sheriff's office.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll go ahead and second that motion. Madam Clerk?
Mister Kern?
Yes.
Mister Ware?
Yes.
Chairman Trejo?
Yes. Thank you. Moving forward onto item number fourteen, discussion action of ordinance twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four dash O two, an amendment to the ordinance twenty 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 twenty-one dash O three, an ordinance adopting the legislative intent, findings, and purpose relating to the regulation of cannabis. Yep. County Manager Gore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the Commissioner will recall, we uh have adopted uh an ordinance uh twenty twenty-one dash O three regarding cannabis. And one of the things that came up is when we actually uh had Mr. Billingsley apply, there was a component, uh and that component was indemnification, that this commission felt needed to be um included in that cannabis ordinance. So the county attorney and I have taken uh our marching orders and have changed it. Uh so there uh had uh has the uh indemnification clause, and the commission should have been provided with those changes. And I would recommend that with those changes, and I understand there may be a few, but um I I think we're we're getting it down to where it's uh one of the best cannabis ordinances probably in the state.
Thank you, County Manager. Uh Commissioner Kern, any comment?
Well, I know Commissioner Ware had mentioned that he had some changes that he'd like to see, and just a reminder that those changes will reset the thirty-day clock.
Commissioner Ware, would you like to address your changes?
Uh yes, Mr. Chairman. Um I'm okay with this policy. As I said in the meeting, I am okay with the indemnification clause. Um after further consideration of the fact that it's still a federal crime to um utilize cannabis in the way that we're allowing. Uh and so that does open the county up to some liability, and because of that, I'm okay with the indemnification clause. But uh paragraph ten, I'm sorry, section ten, paragraph E, I would request that the um word not, uh so instead of saying shall not have, um it would say shall have um be, so the word not be stricken or removed from the ordinance. Uh my other request um for amendment is in section fifteen, which refers to this as a emergency ordinance, uh the emergency clause, and I disagree that this is an emergency. I don't think it's appropriate to incorporate that clause. Uh so I'd like section fifteen stricken. And I'm ready to make a motion as such. I want to give commission time to comment.
Thank you. Uh my my purse or, actually, Commissioner Kern, I'll let you go first if you'd like to go. I I think it's okay as as written, because we are okay with the indemnification. And this says, if a permittee refuses to execute the indemnification agreement, it will result in a non issuance of a permit or revocation of a permit issued, and permit permittee shall not have any right to appeal this decision to Colfax County. If they choose not to do the indemnification, then we're gonna be hearing from everyone because they, if they could forego the indemnification, why wouldn't they? Um I feel like they would just bring it in front of each and every single one of us, and then we would have to say, yeah, no again, if we wanted to uphold the indemnification with this ordinance. And then regarding section fifteen, just the, it's an emergency clause, but it's to the effective date. So it's saying, once this is, once the commission agrees on this, that it's automatically adopted as of this date moving forward.
Um Mr. Chairman, I I agree with, and understand what you're saying, and as I said previously, um I I think it's the the duty of this commission to hear appeals uh from the public, and I think that uh restricting somebody's ability to appeal, especially since this is such a new item. This is new territory that we're covering in allowing cannabis at all to be consumed or to be grown uh in our state and in our county. I just think there's unknowns out there, and I don't want to restrict anybody's rights to appeal uh a decision for this uh to the commission. Um and again, I I think that if we get further down the road on this and we see that that language isn't appropriate, we do have the ability to make change. As far as the emergency clause, um I I again, my point is, I don't see any reason why we can't follow standard ordinance regulations uh because of this. And um I think part of our responsibility is to give proper notice to the public uh changes that we're making in in regulations and in ordinances. And um so I, you know, we're talking about thirty days. I think the county uh can can uh do the proper notifications, uh standard notifications, and wait thirty days for this to come into play. Uh so uh that's why I um I'd like section fifteen to be stricken.
Commissioner Kern? No comment?
No comment.
Commissioner Ware?
Uh so uh I'd like to make a motion to approve. Uh I forgot the ordinance number, twenty-four is O two? Yeah, twenty. I'd like to make a motion to approve uh twenty-four O two uh with, or actually, I I need to make a motion to amend twenty-four O two uh section ten, paragraph E, to strike the word not out of the last sentence, and then to strike section fifteen.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh yes.
If if what has been advertised is gonna be changed, then we have to go back out. We make the changes, and then it has to be advertised again for thirty days
Correct.
for input, so we can't vote on it um today if we're gonna make any changes.
He's voting for the amendment currently right now.
Okay.
So there's
I don't think that's what, but.
Well, there's a motion to amend the the policy to go back out to the public. Is there a second?
Second.
You'll second that?
If it's going back out to public, yeah.
Yeah, right, Commissioner?
Yeah, it'll have to, yeah. Commissioner Kern's right.
So so let me write for your motion. You're talking about this one, right?
Correct, yes.
And section fifteen.
Strike section fifteen?
That's correct.
So there's been a a motion and a second.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Ware?
Yes.
Chairman Trejo?
No. Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to fifteen, discussion action, appoint lodgers tax advisory board members Lori Bunker and Michael Brown. Mrs. Colangelo.
Morning. In front of you, you have the letters of interest for Ms. Lori Bunker and Michael Brown. They're interested in joining on the board, uh the lodgers tax board. Um the lodgers tax board has approved their interest in it. I looking for approval from the commission. You have any questions?
Commissioner Kern?
No questions.
Commissioner Ware?
No.
Let us thank uh both these individuals for taking the time to serve. Uh we really do appreciate it. And uh I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second amendment. Clerk?
Mister Kern?
Yes.
Mister Ware?
Yes.
Chairman Trejo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number sixteen, it's discussion action, amending the M V C, M V, M geez, so mighty. V M D C policy, transport post order. Warden Slade?
Good morning. Um so as all you know, we have done a mock audit. Well, it's still in the process. The mock audit till Friday. Um after speaking with a couple of the assessors, um I need, th- this was left out, missed during part of the policy changes last year, and I just need this added in to help with the accreditation.
Commissioner Kern, any questions?
I have no, no problem with this, Commissioner Ware.
Uh yes, Mr. Chairman, I only have one question. How much closer or how close are we to accreditation?
So the process now, by the end of the week, they should be done with the the mock audit. Um they will send out a recommendation to the New Mexico counties. I will also get that same assessment um to see how close we are. The gentleman I spoke to says we're doing really, really well. And it's it's all based on what they're gonna say, um but my goal is still to have it at least, and I know I wanted to do it by the end of February with the mock audit, you know, taking two weeks, and then uh so I'm hoping by April, no later. Um I know it's pushed back, but you know, like I said, we still have to make the corrections, because you know, I want to make sure the corrections are there prior to the actual audit. That way, those are there, and they don't tell us that we have to wait another six months or eight years for accreditation. So my goal is still before the fiscal year. So we can all go down and
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to thank you for all the hard work. This is a big deal in light, especially in light of previous occurrences. Um so I want to thank you and your staff for all your hard work, and we should have a big party in April when we get that accreditation.
Well, I'll keep you guys informed. I appreciate that, sir. Um we're all still working hard, and like I said, we're working really hard with New Mexico counties, and I am working really hard with the assessors who've been tremendous help getting us to where we are today. Um and hopefully, we we're still on board, and my goal is still before the fiscal year, and we can all go to the to the June, uh my brain's not working, just thinking, yes, A P O D C today, the conference, and I'll stand up there and say, hey, yeah, Colfax County did it, so that's my goal.
Well, thank you.
Very much, Warren. Appreciate all the
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Commissioner Kern.
Thank you. Um Warden Slade, would it be possible to share that assessment with the commission when you receive it?
Of course.
Thank you.
Of course.
Well, thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved to second amendment, Clerk?
Mister Kern?
Yes.
Mister Ware?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number seventeen, it's discussion action between agreement, discussion action agreement between Colfax County and Rocky Road Gravel and Well Drilling Services LLC. County Manager Gore?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I received a signed contract uh last Thursday, uh late afternoon, and uh bothered uh Tina to get this uh back on the agenda. I did check with legal counsel at that time, and legal counsel felt that was the appropriate way to go. And this is the agreement that's signed, and we just need it signed off by the commission. And then in my docket, I can give you an update on uh where we're at in the scheme of things. Low water processing.
Thank you, County Manager. Commissioner Kern, any questions?
Um just wondering what the change was from the last one that we approved that took off the, that amended the insurance.
I don't think there is no change. The, just the contractor had signed it.
But we had already approved it.
Legal counsel thought it'd be best that we bring it back in front of the commission after the contractor had signed it.
Mister Chairman, that's exactly correct. I did contact legal counsel and ask him that specific question. And was told uh it would be in the best interest of the county, bring it back and have the commission approve it, and we'll get it signed. Very simple process.
Commissioner Kern, anymore? Commissioner Ware? Seeing none. I'll make the motion to approve this, the contract. Sir, a second?
Second.
So we move to second amendment, Clerk?
Uh no, Commissioner Kern?
I'm still convoluted here. I I'm not real sure what the, what's going on, but this needs to be done. Need to move forward with it. So, yes.
Commissioner Ware?
Yes.
Chairman Trejo?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to item number eighteen, manager's docket.
Thank you very much, uh Mr. Chairman. I uh want the commission to know that the following letter went out to Tri-State, and this is on February twelfth. It says pursuant to paragraph four, subsection A, of the services contract between Tri-State and Colfax County. Colfax County hereby provide sixty days' notice of the termination of services contract to you. The termination date will start after you receive this notice via email and certified mail. The county respectfully request you continue your services for the next sixty days, at which time the county can prepare for transition of services to the city of Colfax County. If you have any questions in this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me. So I was able to work with Ricardo, and we have agreed that April thirteenth is the last day that Tri-State will provide services up for solid waste to Colfax County. Julie and I have been working with Ror- uh Arthur Roloff uh to develop contingency plans and trying to make this a seamless transition. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. And there may be a few hiccups. I'm advising the commission of that now. But we will get through them. We will take a leadership role, and we will make this work. Arthur Roloff already has a truck that he purchased that it can pick up the existing dumpsters, and I know he's in negotiation with Tri-State to buy some of those dumpsters. And he's ordering new dumpsters. And he is uh on board with this, and he knows that this is going to be uh challenging, and he's up for the challenge. Uh I think he's talked to this for numerous times, and I think the commission can be confident. And uh he's gonna, he's a man of his word, in my opinion. And there, like I said, there may be a few challenges that exist, but we'll have contingency plans in place, and hopefully uh have a seamless transition into our transition into our solid waste contractor. And I think this will be a benefit to all citizens of Colfax County. Getting new services. I think this is something that's been needed for years, if not decades. Um, along those, uh, those thoughts. Julie has contacted the following, uh, individuals. I contacted Rick Sheen with the state and advised them of the changes. We've notified Hidden Lake customers. We've notified Wellspring Stables. Baldi Mountain Welding and Construction. IDWIL has been informed. TA Truck Stock has been notified. Maxwell Housing has been notified. Simron Solar Facility has been notified. New Mexico Wildlife Headquarters has been notified. CNC Wild Game Processors has been notified. The Airport at Angel Fire's been notified. Aspen Springs Resort has been, uh, notified as well. We also have Arthur, uh, Roloff has been out in the field and been contacting citizens as well. And notifying that the county has changed solid waste, uh, provider. And has been, uh, letting them know that he's gonna be taking over solid waste functions in Colfax County. So, once again, we're trying to get everything in order. And advise citizens, uh, and other governmental entities that the county is no longer gonna be contracting with Arthur Roloff. And they'll probably have to make new, uh, arrangements with Arthur Roloff. I was also asked by, uh, Vice Chair Kern to provide the county's, uh, lawsuit update. And so I'm prepared to do that now. We have Colfax County versus Roadrunner Health Services LLC and very return. That's D eight zero nine C V twenty twenty-two one seven three. Cooperation with, uh, continuing investigations with the New Mexico Attorney General's Office for moving vision on that case. Last week, I worked with the, uh, clerk's office and the assessor's office on a general lawsuit of Geneva Law Langworthy. This was brought against the sheriff's office and myself. I believe all the information that I provided, uh, we should get that case dismissed. I have another case, David Benjamin Rick Sinclair, Colfax County Sheriff's Office. Case D eight zero nine C V twenty twenty-three zero zero six three. I checked with New Mexico counties and they're working to, uh, try to get that dismissed. We have another one, Benjamin Slope versus Colfax County. Board of County Commissioners and the Village of Angel Fire. A defendant, this case number is D as in David, eight zero nine C V twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 two two. And once again, this, uh, involves the sheriff's office. The county of Secoral. E T Secretary Robert Shea, case number D as in David, seven two five C V twenty twenty-three, dash zero zero eight five, New Mexico Root Health Insurance Plans. Uh, with no charge, as the commission is aware, the state increased, uh, health insurance prices. And, uh, if you're reviewing that, it's important at this time. There are, uh, some court claims accounted received, but based on the recommendation and advice from legal counsel, I'm not going to address those issues at this time. Is there any other additional questions, uh, that the commission would have for me at this time?
Commissioner Ware? No. So, how many lawsuits is it? Like five?
Six at this point.
Six at this time, okay, thank you. Anything further, County Manager?
That's all I have for my docket. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Kern, anything for your commissioner's docket? Move on to item number nineteen.
Um, really don't have anything to report at this point, at this time, uh, just going back to the indigent claims and that, uh, I know in the past, the county has made an effort on occasion to to have, uh, charges dropped against an inmate or that if, if there was a reason for high risk or, um, one comes to mind that the individual was actually on hospice care, um. Another one that comes to mind in the past was a, uh, high-risk, uh, pregnant female that, um, was also being treated for, um, opiate abuse, um, and the judge agreed to drop the charges and stuff so that, that it would help the county not incur a tremendous amount of, um, fees associated with the medical care, um. You know, as going back to the, the fight for life, I mean, uh, I'm not, I'm not questioning the decision or anything like that, you know, to save a life is, is the important thing. Um, I just want to make sure that we're making due diligence, uh, to, in the event that it can be, if it's not an individual that is, you know, a hi- high-risk felon or something like that, if the charges are, are misdemeanors and that, that, uh, that we work with our judges and that to get those dropped so that we don't incur tremendous fees, um, but like I said, I'm not questioning, um, trying to save somebody's life, that's the most important thing, but, um, you know, the relationships with the courts and everything, I think are extremely important to to, uh, to try to save our constituents fees. That's all I have.
Uh, I did have a quick question for you, Commissioner Kern. Did you happen to hear anything more from AT&T or have any luck with?
I, I have not. We're playing tag back and forth, so.
Would there be any?
Still working on that.
My thought is, there would, there be any benefit from the wireless tower solution, seeing if they could get in contact with them? Do you have any desire for that?
Um, they're not real happy with them right now, but I, I mean, that, that's a possibility, of course, but, um, I would like to try to discuss it with them first.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ware?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, just a couple of quick things. Um, first of all, I wanna, uh, commend the, uh, staff once again for the financial policies. Um, I know they're not approved yet, but I think they will be at our next meeting. I, again, um, I read, only did a single read-through since I, we just got them on Monday, but and, uh, my single read-through, I think that, um, uh, they're quite well-written and, and needed and um, I think they'll help us move forward, not just with our issues with, uh, needing a fiscal agent, but actually our processing of financial material at the county. Um, you know, sometimes it's, the improvements are in the margin. I don't know that we had that bad a processing. I think the issues we had that caused us to have a fiscal agent were uh, kinda a sima- somewhat unique and, and, uh, specific. But having policies like this would, will prevent those types of, uh, unique issues from occurring in the future, hopefully. Also, I want to report to you that, um, the, that, uh, NITO is alive. Well, I was gonna say alive and well. Let me just leave it at alive. They are alive. We do have a, a new director. And, um, unfortunately, I was able, I wasn't able to make the last meeting because I had a prior commitment, but I will be able to attend the next meeting, uh, that we will be having at NITO and report back to the commission, uh, on what's going on in NITO, since I haven't been a part of that for about a year. Um, uh, also, I wanna, uh, thank the commission for working with North Central on this housing thing. Housing is such a critical need for Colfax County. Uh, I know this is only a small piece. Uh, that's gonna help to address that need. Uh, but I think, uh, Colfax County showed great leadership in stepping forward and committing uh, our citizens' dollars to this program being directed by North Central Economic Development. And, uh, I think over time, we'll, we're, we will see great rewards from this program. So, I want to thank you for, for, uh, agreeing to move forward with that. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Ware. Um, I did want to just touch base or have county manager, you, would you give us an update on what you did with, uh, Tiger Nine? For this last, since our last meeting? I know there was some action taken.
You know, we did, we, uh, actually filled out, uh, paperwork on Tiger Nine and we're working to, uh, ensure that we get, uh, information turned in in a timely way. And, uh, we're continuing to move forward. And I know that June, uh, I bought, uh, did a lot of work on that as well. I committed those efforts. And, uh, if the commission has, uh, time, I have, I, I never briefed everybody on Chicoria, uh, water. And I can do that very quickly.
Sure, but let me, let me just touch base on the Tiger Grant. Uh, a letter had been sent to, a certified letter been sent to Amtrak, correct? A certified letter been sent to Amtrak, is that correct, County Manager?
I would like to verify that. We've had a busy week. I believe we did, but I don't want to say yes when we haven't.
Okay, well, at any rate, one has been drafted and.
One's been drafted.
Yeah, okay, go ahead and County Manager on the Chicorica.
Thank you. If you can go ahead and pull up that, uh, web slide.
Is it in your email?
Well, just go on. That's where the report.
Okay. Pretty good. I'll re-circle back that to that, Tim, once you get it. I'll just give a quick update on, on my stuff. I met with the city of Rattone. Uh, they have the National Park Service here along with the Trails Plus from the state of New Mexico. The city of Rattone is actually moving forward with a National Park Service grant for trails. Uh, this is gonna be more so, uh, uh, I'll have a planner, uh, so I'm gonna, they wanted a full commission letter of support, but the deadlines, like, at the end of the month, I figured I would just write one as my, myself. Uh, submit that and also I, I did a letter of support for Resound about them just trying to go after some broadband funding, uh, for the county. Um, also, I did have a, a thought, and I know this is, had been kinda mentioned in the past, but, um, Simron, in the cities, in the village of Simron, the county owns, uh, old railroad spur that goes straight through the, through the center of town. And when I kinda mentioned that to the Trails Plus and the National Park Service, uh, they haven't stopped bugging me about it. So, they said that's the perfect, uh, what they want to build trails. And I don't know if the commission or the city of Simron would have any interest in having a trail put through there. You know, I'd, I'd kinda defer this to Commissioner Ware and Commissioner Kern, since this is mostly their, mostly their districts. Um, they did have funding available. They have about six million dollars to spend by the end of June. Uh, and they would be willing to start with the planning process of this if we wanted to apply for that. So, I'll just kinda leave it at that, leave it in your courts if you guys would like to, to pick that up or go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would say that, um, I've been trying to get that portion that's within the municipality of Simron, uh, transferred to the village of Simron now for three years. Um, it seems like everybody says, oh, yeah, we can do that, and then it never happens. Uh, but that, um, the city of Simron had intentions of turning that piece of land or extending their veterans memorial uh, with at least a portion of that property. Um, because it runs, coincides with their veterans memorial. And when they were gonna do the original plan, they couldn't build it out to the way they originally specked because, um, they did not own that property, uh, so, and uh, you know, a trail might be good, especially going through the veterans memorial. I don't know. I'd have to consult with the new mayor uh, that Simron has and, and see what the council there wants to do. Uh, but I, I would be very interested in continuing movement towards transferring that land to the village, so the village could utilize it for some form of recreational access.
Thank you, Commissioner Ware. Question?
Yes, Commissioner Kern. Um, sorry, better? Currently being used, you know, the, it, they've got the markers and some historical sites and all that there. There was some question at one point in time whether the county actually owned it or if DOT did. NMDOT, because I remember we looked at it before, but, um, and I don't know if that was ever actually clarified, but, um, I think it may be NMDOT that actually has that property, but, um, that's all.
Thank you. I, uh, I got the stuff, uh, the information from the assessor. I'll forward it along to the county during having, just forward it along and Commissioner Ware, if you'd like to pick this up and see if they have any interest or whatever, I think it'd just be a, a great economic development for that trail, for the money to go in. Uh, it'd also benefit the Boy Scouts. Um, and just the local, local people there. Uh, it'd help with the, the gross receipts tax with, if we do go and build trails, um. So, yeah, but the only other comment I had too is on, it was March twenty-first, I believe. We'll probably need a notice to be sent out. Uh, I'll be attending, I believe Commissioner Ware will and perhaps Commissioner Kern. This is gonna be in New Mexico County's, uh, legislative review down at Highlands University in Las Vegas. So, that is, that's all.
And, Mr. Chairman, if it's proper, may I ask you to give us an update on the, uh, commercial airline grant? I know you've personally been working on that.
So, I know that the state has been, uh, during the legislative session, the senate put in fifteen million dollars, uh, to fund the rise prize program. And right now, I've, I've been in, or I haven't been in, I've been in contact, they just haven't replied yet with Pedro, the director of the state aviation. Um, I requested to see what are the next steps forward. I understand that the money has been allocated. Uh, when are those funds available and where do we stand as far as Colfax County? On our application, do we need to reapply or do we just need to be, have updated, uh, airline agreements or, or what? So, I'm, I haven't heard anything yet. I'll, uh, I figure I'd give it about a week and then I'll reach back out. Maybe I'll probably go to Dan Moran. Yeah, of course.
I don't have any of my notes with me, but I did, um, upon manager's request, um, start researching that grant a little bit. And I did speak to Dan Moran by phone. Um, he did say that, you know, they had committed the funding, but they wouldn't be formally announcing um, the availability of those grant monies until July. But he did make the comment that they do not intend to have Colfax County reapply. They will consider our prior applications. So, at this point, I'll be exploring, um, you know, the grant application that we did submit as well as the contract that we have, um, with the, with the commercial carrier to ensure, I'll be reviewing it with Danielle, hopefully to ensure that we don't need to get a new contract in place to kind of see what the expiration was on that, to see if we need to go back out to R F T or if that one is still going to work for our purposes for this grant. But it sounded really promising that they didn't want to have us reapply, that they would just go ahead and consider our past application.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much. That's pretty much all I have there, Commissioner. So, I'll go ahead and let it turn it over to County Manager Gore about the Chicorica Lowwater Crossing. County Manager?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And I can, uh, I just recall that letter that you, uh, referenced to, uh, Amtrak did go out. Um, I had it sent out certified mail last week. I also had additional documentation, uh, included with that letter from twenty seventeen to, uh, let them review what the agreement was. And I do have, uh, the paperwork. And I do have uh the paperwork uh that that letter has been sent out, certi- certified mail.
Thank you.
So what you're looking at right now is one of three semis. That is out at Chickorica Creek, Chickorica Creek. Len and I went out there yesterday and uh met with the contractor. That just kinda shows the scope and size of this operation. As the commission will recall, the county had a twenty-four-foot piece of uh culvert. That has holes in it and has uh been used for many years. We did get a donation of uh ten feet from the state of New Mexico. The specs for this was a hundred and twenty feet by seventy-two inches. So this is all brand new. It was just completed last week. These culverts were just made last week. So I talked to uh Orin Matthews. He is working with Wes at this point. To uh place uh equipment, culverts down. And get more material up for this project. So we are moving rapidly uh to getting this project underway. I was told by Orin. Weather permitting and favorable skies, two and a half weeks, we should have a low-water crossing at Chickoria Creek.
Thank you, Commissioner, or County Manager Gore.
You're very welcome, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, is there anything further? Commissioner Kern? No, County Manager, or geez, Commissioner Ware. Yeah, yeah, all right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved to second, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Kern. Commissioner Ware.
Yes, yes.